Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like our audience to make sure that your phones are on either mute or shut off, and appreciate that. First item on the agenda is roll call. Patty, would you please?
Wanda?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Don?
Here.
John?
Here. Next item, any conflict of interest from any of our board members here? And we'll start with Wanda.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Need a motion to approve our agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
John, I'd like to add an item, short discussion on strategic planning.
Okay. Where would you like to add that to?
You can add it wherever you want. It can be the last item if you want. Alternative H-H-R.
Yeah, why don't we move that right at that point in time after, as 11A.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the correction, our addition of 11A.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion by Dan, seconded by Ryan, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item. Public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeit of remaining speaking time. Do we have any public comments? Hearing, seeing none, I will close. Public comment. Our next item starts at 6:05, but I think we can, we can move, move forward with that, approve a emergency management volunteers.
My only question, Paul, I got one, sorry, quick. I know we got a bunch of different lists, and there are multiple people filling multiple roles. We just have insurance?
Just for the ones that are, just the one, like a one name.
Okay, so if-
So if I'm listed four different groups, I'm only going to count it as one.
That was, that was my, that was my only question. I'd make a motion to approve the emergency manage-
Second.
Volunteer list that we're- Okay. And again, appreciate everything these volunteers do to help us in our time of need.
Yep.
It's greatly appreciated.
And, and for the public, the, the list is basically volunteers that help out with emergency management systems throughout the year. And they, it's, it's a list that we need to make available to our insurance company, work, workers' compensation company, so that the volunteers, if they do get hurt on a project, they are covered. So I approve, appreciate everything that they done, they do, and the workup goes on that. So I have a motion by Dan, seconded by Wanda, to approve the list for workers' compensation for our volunteers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Paul, can you, can you just address that, what's going on with that, what is it? The county out west, Sturgis, that Sturgis is in, what, what are they doing with?
Mead County? I, there's a lot, I mean, I don't know any particular, I mean, I don't know what the top-
They have some drive they're making that, I think it's talked about the demise of EMS and-
Oh, I think that would have been about the old 239, the bill that failed. That, they were trying to, the, some, some orga-, I don't know exactly where, but somebody wanted to combine, make the emergency manager, they take all the counties, put in groups of four, and then the state would have hired one person to come in and run it. And yet the counties would still have to provide a person, still pay for that person, pay for a place to put it, a room or an office, and the ELC, all that stuff, in that four-county region. And then in turn, if, if some disaster happened, let's say we were with Bonhomme County and Yankton County, if Bonhomme was worse, they might send that person to Bon-, I mean, it was kind of, but they were looking at regionalizing, like maybe four counties with one state employee in charge of it, and yet one representative from each county to be able to help that, because that person might not be, who knows where they come from, you know? I'm not saying it wouldn't be somebody maybe local for us in our region, but we don't know that.
Through the bill and now-
Yeah, I didn't even, it didn't even make, and if I'm not mistaken, there was a lot of push for it not to even move forward.
Good.
So, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anything else that you want to enlighten us with?
In those volunteers, just so you know, that's also includes our search and rescue team that does the water stuff, the diving, the water recovery, stuff of that nature. I know the next one you got coming up is the homeland grant, is that, or the home, fire, wildfire. You might be seeing, I'm starting to email, it isn't so much the winery stuff anymore, as it is now the fiery stuff that's coming up. We've been on and off, this, this is the earliest that I recollect that we've had something, maybe one here, one there, but it's been pretty, I mean, this is like number nine days, and just in April, or February, March, that we've had no burning. This isn't a burn ban, and I want to maybe just say a little bit on that. We have a resolution and an ordinance, and in our resolution, we have two ways of doing something. One is that when the grassland index range gets, from the National Weather Service gets to very high or extreme, we're able to put on a, oh, no open burning for that particular day. If we see a dry spell where it's going to be weeks, we'll, we'll come in front of you, and again, we're, we talk with the fire departments and stuff like that, where we would put on the burn ban. So it would go in place and there'd be nothing. So now we've kind of been putting it on, taking it off. I know it gets confusing. I put our, my website, YanktonOEM.com, we update daily. And I did put a little notice on it the other day, somebody kind of said that it wasn't updated, but if I don't get the updates from the weather service in time, it might not update till nine o'clock in the morning, rather than eight, or six, or five, depending on, so it's a statement is, if you need to know here, click on this website. It'll take you to the page that I look at to put this on. So we try to do everything, at least every day, you know, like tomorrow, we're on, we're red flagged tomorrow. We went into a fire advisory this afternoon at 4:21. So from now until dark, we were in a no burn situation. It's kind of hard if somebody would have did something earlier in the day, but it's just to let people know. But that's just something that we're, hopefully we get some moisture here in the next few days, and we don't, we go back the other way and not have to worry about it, but-
Yep.
Right now, it don't look-
Perfect, and, and thanks for keeping us updated on that.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission on, with Paul? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second, motion by Dan, seconded by Wanda, to approve the resolution. Any further discussion, commission discussion, hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, Mike, Highway Department, approve a micro-surface bid.
So we had micro-surfacing out, that's a process we started here a few years ago. Put out the bid, we had three bidders. It actually came back cheaper per mile this year than it did last year. Last year, we were at a $56,000 a mile. This year, we're at approximately $52.5, so-
That's good. Good news.
Asphalt surfacing company is a, bidders at one and out of Sioux Falls, local company. Aztec was a group out of St. Cloud, they bid, and then also Missouri Petroleum, which, that's who did ours last year. They came out as a high bid. So-
Recommend the asphalt surfacing company-
Yep.
-out of Sioux Falls?
And that's, that includes for that $52.5, that's the striping and everything, so-
That's good.
And that's for how many miles this year?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three miles that we're going to do this year, so, cool.
So the grand total of that'll be a million two.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the micro-surfacing bid from-
Asphalt surface-
Asphalt surfaces in Sioux Falls, by Don, seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Well, thank you for getting three bids that-
Motion carries. Mike, just for, just for, because micro-surfacing is a, kind of a new product, maybe just give a thirty-second synopsis or explanation on, on the micro-surfacing process.
Micro-surfacing, it's in between asphalt overlay and a chip seal. Chip seal, you're sealing cracks. Asphalt overlay, well, you're sealing, well, you're not really sealing cracks, but you're putting a new, total new driving surface on. Micro-surfacing is kind of a mix of filling, your small cracks won't come back through, but you're also filling in wheel rutting and small imperfections in the road. Grade issues, not so much, but like I said, the wheel rutting and small imperfections, so you do get a better ride out of it. We've had good feedback on it. So I feel, continue on doing this process and kind of keep a mix of chip seal, micro-surfacing, and asphalt overlays in the counties, so.
Mr. Chair. You know, I'd just like to thank Mike and, and John for, for you guys at home, we're trying to utilize a newer technology to save dollars so we can get more roads, you know, back up to snuff, and, and this is certainly a lot cheaper than paving. We used to have, the only option was paving, but by basically milling this flat, we can save taxpayer dollars and go further. So just wanted to say thank you for you guys for looking into using newer technology to help us out, so, thank you.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Mike.
You got one more.
And then, and then we also have declare items as surplus.
Yep. Back in December, we purchased that motor grater, so we have that for surplus. Paver, we bought, we purchased a different one last spring. Well, we wanted to take some accessories off of it and get it on our new one, so that happened this winter, so now that's ready to go. And we also have a 1987 Chevy crew cab that-
You're getting rid of that? 1987, nothing lasts anymore.
Everybody avoids it, so it's, it's just time to go.
1987.
And we got a nice truck from, from Paul's group over there.
To replace it.
To replace it.
Are we putting that on Purple Wave again, or what's the plan with those?
Undecided on that pickup, we might wait for Gerard's.
Okay.
But the two big pieces of equipment will go Purple Wave.
Okay. I would at this time take a motion to approve the sale of excess equipment.
I would make the motion to-
Or declare.
Declare property as surplus so it can be sold.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Wanda, seconded by Ryan, to declare items as surplus, as stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I would like a motion, or vote of all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Next item, approve our February 20th minutes.
I have a, an issue with the February 20th minutes on page 12, item number 2465C, as in cat. It says that, and now, this is the claim for Herman Lincoln Fox Law Office. It says I abstain, and then it says that the motion carried five to zero, so it should probably be motion carried four zero, one abstention.
Yep.
Okay. And then also, action 2448HWY. Motion was made by Clemish, seconded by Fox, to approve striping agreement. We want to strike the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation and replace that, excuse me, replace that with Dakota Traffic Services and Yankton County.
Good catch.
Would at this time take a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Ryan, seconded by Don, to approve the minutes as amended. Further discussion? Hearing seen, done. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Claims. Can I get a motion to approve the claims?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have, need a motion to approve the February 2024 payroll.
I move to approve the February 2024 payroll.
I have a motion by Wanda, seconded by Dan, to approve February 2024 payroll. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Gary, advertise planning commission openings.
It's that time of year, we have a couple of planning commissioners that are up for, up for their, their positions are up. We have Dennis Michael and Kathy Weiss, whose positions are up, and so we'd like to advertise for, for two openings, and the deadline for that will be Monday, March 25th. We'll advertise for the next three weeks if you want to move forward, and, and we'll go from there.
Make a motion to allow Gary to advertise for planning commissioners.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Dan, seconded by Wanda, to approve the, Gary to advertise for our opening slots at the planning and commission, planning and zoning board positions. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Gary, you're up again for the Maybomb Rezone.
Mr. Chair, I think that's got to take place at 6:30. I'd recommend maybe we go on to something else.
Okay. 6:30, so we got ten, twelve minutes.
Commissioner updates.
Commissioner updates. Wanda, do you have a commissioner update?
I do not.
Ryan, how about you?
Well, first off, I guess, last meeting, we initiated the cha-, we had the presentation of the new planning and zoning forms. We have those now live on our site alongside with the old system, so we're going to run that system here for the next month as we transition, so try to get everything on the old system wrapped up, and then push anything new going through the new forms. So that is moving forward, and by the end of the month, we'll be wrapped up with that.
Perfect, perfect.
Few other, you know, we, I think we have, still have a few links that go to some hard PDFs that maybe we might still work with to get it all onto the same system, so everything's uniform.
Awesome. Dan?
Yeah, making some good progress this year on bills going through our state legislature. It looks like House Bill 1057 for indigent legal defense is going to be stood up with maybe even additional authorization. So that's great news for all counties. House Bill 1092 with the E911 dollars, looks like that's going to go from, I believe, a dollar twenty-five to two dollars, so that'll help out on 911. And then Senate Bill 187, seven million dollars for municipalities and counties to create some cybersecurity, so that's exciting, and it's, it's taken a while, but, you know, this year, the counties have had, had some losses, but we've had some wins too, and so it's a good thing. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Heiney on being elected as a vice chair of the Drainage, Clay-Yankton Drainage Board, so congratulations on that.
Congratulations.
Keep up the good work on that, so. Any drainage, any, any drainage issues, he's the guy to talk to.
Yeah.
So, but no, congratulations.
Thanks.
Don, any updates?
Well, we've been with, meeting weekly on the wind towers, and I think we're closing in on, on coming up with the revised ordinance to present to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Lots of interesting discussion. Lots of different opinions. Probably really only two, I guess. One's for and the other's against.
Mr. Chair, you know, and something with that, with the passage of the 201, I believe that lightly talks on transmission lines as well, and that might add a little complexity, and it's just maybe something we should be aware of. I don't know how it's going to affect wind turbines, but definitely could be something we, we hadn't even thought about until recently, so.
Yep, yep. It's, it's one of those unfortunate things, because it's like, we, we don't want to be outside of those discussions, because where those transmission lines go and stuff is very much important to our planning and zoning, you know, within our county. And so we, you know, kind of wish that, you know, it's more of, that the counties were involved, you know, that, you know, that everyone has the fears, and-
And, and that's a great point you bring up, is, is it, it's important to the county, and it's really important to future growth. If there are entire swaths of the county that are now closed down to any development in the future, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
And so we just need to be aware of that. I don't know what we, at what ability we have, but as long, we, maybe just somehow integrate that into the processes, so, thank you.
I had one other thing.
Certainly.
Lewis and, I attended, I attend the Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, the board meetings every, every month, and on their new facility, because of the good weather, they've been able to catch up. So things are going well there.
Yeah. Excuse me, I, I drive by there every morning on my way to work, and, and it's kind of amazing to see what the, how much more stuff is getting done, and they got a roof on this part of it, and, and that, so, so of course, so. An update on, from, from my aspect, is we, we just had our last, last week, we had our first meeting on the, on the Juvenile Delinquent Task Force. Moving, we're moving forward on that, and I think the 12th is our next meeting. We decided to go with, with a smaller group to begin with, to, to kind of focus in on where we want to, where we want to head with this, and then we'll, then we'll incorporate more people, and Dr. Stanage, of, of course, is going to be involved in our next meeting, so. So I think that's a, a positive move forward on the, on the juvenile task force, so, so we'll keep you updated on that also, so. Other than that, I guess that's, that's pretty much what we have for commission updates. Other than Ryan failed to, failed to explain, we do have a, a new member this evening in, involved in our meeting with Five Star Communication, who started to stream our, our meetings live on Five Star Communication, and also on our, on our YouTube channel, so.
Yes, I did forget that.
You, you got anything you want to add to that, or?
Well, and yeah, so tonight will be our first run, and we, hopefully, we will be improving the streaming, the, the streaming product as we keep going through on each meeting, so we are, we have, we have some kinks that we're still working out, and we're going to work through them and make the streaming product a lot better.
Great. And the, and the young gentleman, his name is?
Gage Revelette.
You want to come up to the microphone?
We got to make him come up.
And introduce yourself, because I can't produce that, pronounce that name, so.
No, we don't need it. Gage Revelette.
All right, thank you for being here, and we appreciate-
Are you like a former Yankton resident, or are you new to the area?
No, I, I'm a freshman at USD, and picked up this job. My major is broadcasting, so this camera work is kind of my area.
Good.
Welcome.
Can you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
That's common spelling.
Yeah. And thanks for, thanks for being here, and we look forward to seeing your smiling face. Look forward to seeing your smiling face at our meetings.
If you want to drop, if you want to do the executive session before we leave, we can do that. It'll take us two minutes.
It's never taken us two minutes.
It'll take us two minutes. You guys are real quick.
We can do the strategic planning.
Actually, we have, we could do the-
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning, 11, well, we could do the, we, we, you need to stick around.
You're not getting, you're not getting out of here. We've got two states, two states attorney.
Let's, let's do their, let's do our discussion of compensation review and analysis by Alternative HR, and-
Going to take more than four minutes.
That should not take more than four minutes. What that is, is of course, a few weeks back, we discussed about reviewing our matrix for compensation for our county employees. Alternative HR is a company that is, is, does stuff like that for every county in the state of South Dakota. And Gary and I have contacted them to review our matrix, which not, it does not have anything to do with the, the payroll matrix, but it has to do with putting different positions, or different slots, different positions for our county employees in different slots on the existing matrix. This is, this is a, a company that does this professionally, and I've asked them to, to look at statewide and counties comparable to Yankton County to fill those positions as, so that they're comparable to each position through each county that is comparable to Yankton. And that's basically-
Which counties would those be?
I have no idea.
It'd be like Minnesota.
Davison, Brown.
Lawrence County is a similar size.
So, so-
Davison and Brown are both bigger than us.
So they're, they're going to do this, they're going to do this analysis for us, what's it costing us to do this analysis?
It's going to cost us $155 per position.
Okay.
So, and we have-
So how many positions do we have?
We have, Gary says 54, I say 48.
So let's say 53.
Okay. So for less than $10,000, we're going to be able to come up with a, a scale that is going to say that if I'm a, if I'm a, a deputy treasurer in Yankton County, I'm going to have, I'm going to be at the, the level, the wage level at the same as what, five or six other counties that are comparable in size to us.
Are they, I mean, yeah, I guess I'm curious-
Because they have, they have all, they have all of the information through the state side.
Yeah, I'm just curious how that information is going to be perceived, or brought to, and like, are we going to see like, you know, hopefully, ideally, I would like to see is like a nice little bell curve, and where are-
Correct.
-our wage lines, and where we should be-
Correct.
-on that curve.
And, and that is exactly what we need to figure out, because right now, we have positions that are like way out of whack, as far as where, where they're, where they're at on our matrix. It's not going to change the, the wage scale. Eventually, it may, but at least we'll be able to plug people in to the correct position at the per, correct grade and the correct step.
So you're just going to move people randomly up to a different wage scale?
No, we're, we're not randomly going to do that. We're going to do that upon their recommendation and our department heads before we do anything. And, and this is all going to be, the ultimate decision is going to be made by us as a, as a commission.
They're going to make a report, giving us suggestions. We still have to make the decision.
I get that.
You know, I think it's important that we, on occasion, look at these things. We know how hard it is to keep and train good employees, and we, we want to keep our good people and, you know, be loyal to them, and my hope is that they're loyal to us, and, you know- our good people and, you know, be loyal to them, and our, my hope is that they're loyal to us, and, you know, this is an expense, nobody likes to, to spend dollars, um, but I think it's worthwhile, um, again, I look at this as a retention tool and we know how expensive it is to retrain people who have years and years, sometimes decades of experience, and, uh, I think this is, would be a good tool, you know, to do that, I'd, I'd also maybe like to get an analysis of the, maybe department size, so we're ma- making sure we're at the right strength too, and you know, what we do with that is up to us, I mean, we certainly wish we could pay our employees, you know, what they're worth, but we, you know, we are government and we, we have to, uh, be prudent with the tax dollars, and so I, I think this is a, a, a good move. Nobody likes to spend dollars, but we gotta do what we can to show the employees how much we value them.
When, when they do their analysis, are they, are they able to include such things as number of years of service, uh, in the job?
Yes, and, and that was a, that was the, one of the first questions that they asked, is they wanted us to provide them with, with that information.
So are they also going to, um, compare, for example, one department here with one department in Davison County, and Davison County, which is larger, which has less people than we do, are we gonna start cutting staff?
They will give us a advisement towards that, yes.
And I, I would think if, if, what I would wanna see is, I wouldn't wanna see us trying to put county comparison to county comparison, that's, that's gonna be always, it's always gonna be a losing argument when you try to do that, try to stack two counties against each other and just say, okay, try to equillate that, um, what we really need is a statistical analysis of it, and that's what I think I'd like to see is a sta- a statistical analysis where we're not looking at, oh, this is Brookings County, or this is Davison County, what they do, but this is what all the counties do, and this is where the curve ends, and then like, where do we sit in this curve? Do we, you know, ideally, you, anything should be within a bell curve, and you wanna get rid of anything that's in the tails on the either end, those things, those outliers are bad. You wanna fix those, and you wanna bring things closer to center, you know, and I think that's what I would like to see in a report like this.
And, and that's what this company does.
Yeah.
It, it, they have that information, and they're, and they're gonna do those statistics, and, and, and provide us with that, so.
I kinda agree with Dan, it's just that, uh, I hope that we are able to provide a, a great deal of transparency to our employees so that all of them understand what's, what's going on, what's happening. Before something happens.
You know what, we do with the information when we get it, that's up to us, but, you know, knowledge is power and, and I think it's a appropriate move to make, so.
Are we looking for?
So at this, at this point in time, I would ask for a motion to, um, uh, to move forward with, with the Alternative HR review of our, uh, employment compensation package.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Don.
I'll second it.
Second by Ryan, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, uh, I'm, I'm fine with all this, I, I'd like to put a cap on it, like at maybe ten thousand, not to exceed ten thousand, and the reason I wanna do that is I just don't want this company to go, 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 and this is what we're gonna pay for, it's not gonna exceed that, and then we know, i- if you guys are okay with that.
Well, I, I thought the, the cap was a hundred and fifty-five per employee, right?
That's, that's what their, that's what their, uh, proposal was, is a hundred and fifty-five per dollars per hour, per slot.
Per hour?
But.
A hundred and fifty-five dollars per hour, per slot, not per employee, because that's a hundred, that's a hundred and fifty-some employees.
I, I don't think that, I, I don't think that included, you know, Ryan had a good idea of kind of a bell curve thing, which I think is.
And I think that's all included, I think that's all included in that, in that one hour, because they say they don't, they said that, uh, they expect to spend one hour per slot.
Okay. I just don't want them.
Am I correct, Gary, on, on that?
Okay.
And their, on their proposal.
Per slot at a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour?
Yeah, so our matrix that we have now contains, I believe, fifty-four slots.
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna, and that's what we're gonna negotiate with them, I'm not gonna say a hundred and fifty-five dollars per employee per hour because we have several employees.
Are these just full-time?
That's eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, according to Mr. Calculator.
It's what?
According to Mr. Calculator, that would be eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars.
And.
So it should be capped lower than ten.
As long as that's where it's at, I just, I know a lot of times with these companies, you, you, we want this and this, well, that wasn't included, so then they add more and more, and then pretty soon it balloons, I'd like to know, we're not gonna cross this line, and, and if, John, if you want the authority to negotiate that, and I know you're good at that, that's, that's where I, I am, I just don't want it to keep going and going, but.
So we should amend that to have a cap, I'll, I'll amend the motion to have a cap of ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I think that's good, and, and if it comes in at eight, great, but if we wanna add a few things, you know, so, I, I, I would absolutely support that, so.
You good with that, Don?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we still have a, a motion by Don, second by Ryan, amended by Ryan, to put a cap of ten thousand dollars on this Alternative HR review, and that's basically all it is, right now, at this point in time, is a review. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries. Four, one.
I said no, if he said same sign, but I believe the appropriate thing is nay, but.
Correct. So four, one. Okay, let's go to the
Maybaum.
Maybaum, first reading.
Apkins requesting a rezone of a lot in moderate-density rural residential district to low-density rural residential district per Article eighteen. Section eighteen oh nine in Article twenty, section twenty oh three, said property is legally described as block nine, deer-run subdivision located in the east half of the southwest quarter and the west half of the southeast quarter. Section one, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, um, as per plat, as recorded in S nineteen, page one twenty-five, E nine one one, address four three three four eight, three hundred and tenth street. Uh, this property is surrounded on three sides by R one, seven point two eight acres. Gives them a little more flexibility on adding a couple feet to the accessory sidewalls if they'd like, or possibly a hobby farm down the line, and the Apkins in the audience, if you have any questions, first reading.
Gary, on the agenda item, it says, um, Maybaum, but it, in, uh, number ten, it says maybe, is that the same? Or am I just reading it wrong?
I think it's a typo.
Which says on the what, in the?
When you go to number, the?
The packet.
Mine's, mine says M.A.I.B.A.U.M. on both the.
On the agenda. So maybe the packet's just wrong.
I guess I'm not sure which packet you're looking at.
What page are you looking at?
Cause mine all say the same thing, it looks like.
And Gary, this could just be wrong, I just, I just.
I think it's just wrong.
I just double checking.
That's a different, that was a different rezone.
Okay, so it's just a wrong in here.
I think that.
The maybe one was the one.
That was last, last meeting.
Just in there by my.
It's Maybaum, I don't think you have the right paperwork in here.
No, it's.
Cause here's my packet.
So this, okay, okay, no, 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 that looks good, just making sure.
It's right on the agenda.
Yeah, no, 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 that's okay, I just was double checking.
Yeah, the maybe one was the one you did last meeting.
Yeah.
Any questions for the from the commission?
No, sir.
We're all good?
Did we open it up for public comment?
Uh, open up for public comment?
And what? And we're, we're rezoning to, to what then?
R one.
R two, from R two to R one? Okay, and we've done, uh, wasn't that property right next door to that was, uh? Who's, who's that guy?
Was what, Gary?
The gold farm.
Yeah, who was that, who's the guy who used to run Napa?
He's gone.
Yeah, I know, but he owned that property, uh, and we did, we did the same, the same thing right next door to it was, uh, so.
Case we have no questions from the commission.
Tower.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that is our closed public comment on the Maybaum, Maybaum rezone, uh, we're already doing the discussion, alternative, Don, we got, uh, eleven A. Your, your addition to our agenda.
I picked up, uh, the responsibility to, uh, work on strategic planning, uh, for this year, uh, when we reorganized, and, uh, last week, I, uh, made a call on Eric Ambrosia, uh, with District Three, and, uh, talked about, uh, the possibility of getting their assistance and, uh, doing, uh, uh, some, some training for us and helping us develop, uh, a district plan, and he, he thinks, uh, we probably, uh, can tweak last year's plan and, and not have a huge amount of difference in it, take off the things that we kind of accomplished and maybe, uh, work a little more on the things that haven't been accomplished. He suggested, uh, that we, uh, begin in April, uh, so we can, uh, have it, uh, done before our budgeting process starts.
It's a good idea.
And, uh, I, I guess, uh, what I would like to do is see it start towards the end of March, if it's possible, with, with us. Wanda, the only day you can kinda do it on is a Friday?
Preferably in the afternoon, yeah.
Friday afternoons, I'm sure that'll work for Eric, we just gotta, I'll tag, uh, uh, him to come up with two or three Fridays that, uh, he can meet with us, and then, we'll come back, I'll come back to everybody and find out and get a date.
That'll work.
This service under, under their fee for service, uh, uh, would, uh, they, he's estimating, uh, would cost at least five hundred dollars, but not more than a thousand.
So do we need a motion on that?
I don't think so.
Don't they usually do that for, for nothing for us?
I thought they did last time, but I haven't, I just got this at four thirty today.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, as, being as members, so, um, maybe, maybe it's a really good strategic planning, I don't know.
They did, they did quite a bit of work on the last one.
They do good work for us.
I think, I think at, uh, point of when Eric, we discussed with Eric, and if there is gonna be a charge, we can deal with that at that time.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll go through claims.
Yeah, mi- yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, uh, I don't even probably think we need a motion, let's let just Don run with it, he does a great job.
Yep.
You know, and, and I would add, maybe after we do our strategic planning, uh, visiting a little bit with the Clay County Commissioners, they seem open to the idea of, you know, collaborating with another county, and, uh, I know that's something that we've tried to work on, and it hasn't always worked out, but, uh, down the road, maybe that's something we can integrate to, um, because the way the fi- we all know the way finances are for counties, if we don't start working closer together, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be financially viable in the future, so, thank you, Don, for your work on that.
There'd be a, oh, I haven't yet.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, at this time, uh, I don't see anything else on our agenda.
Public comment.
Public comment, at the end of our meetings, we have, uh, second public comments, do we have any other public comments? Hearing and seeing none, uh, public comment is closed.
I would move to go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen point one, one point three.
Second, of a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to move into executive session. Any other comments or commission discussion? Hearing seeing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.